Yeah.
I think I brought like fifty tacos last year, didn't I?
Yeah, you bought them.
Yeah, but they were good, so, and they're tacos. Okay, we're getting ready. Are you by ready, Kathleen?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, we're waiting. We're getting ready to start as soon as you are quiet there, Mr. Hess. You ready, sir? All right. Uh, you ready, Kathleen?
Yes.
Good. All right, welcome, everyone. Uh, this Burlington City Council meeting number twenty-five, January fourth, 2021, five thirty P.M. City Hall, Thomas J. Smith, Council Chambers, four hundred Washington Street. If you're streaming, uh, there's a public access number you can call in, and the meeting number is what you need to, to log into. And remember, we did move comments from the audience to the front of the meeting, so you don't have to sit through all the meetings. So please call in as soon as you can if you are so doing. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, roll call.
Moplin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Here.
Sorry.
Here.
Kreitzer?
Here.
Graham Murray?
Here.
Is there anyone online? Well, we'll circle back in case they decide to call in since we changed that. Uh, first up on tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under item one, consent agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is, is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette permits, reports and bonds. We have one resolution, a resolution approving the purchase of golf carts, or cars, golf cars, I'm sorry, for Flint Hills Golf Course. And we're going to set the date for public hearings for January nineteenth, 2021, consideration of an ordinance amending section one, legal description, and section five, land use slash design requirements of ordinance number thirty-two seventeen and ordinance creating the Fund City Plan Unit Development, PUD, overlay district. We also have consideration of an ordinance amending section B, land use dot design criteria of ordinance number thirty-one oh four for the Burlington Senior Living Campus, PUD. And finally, a consideration of plans and specifications for the 2021 Harrison Avenue Reconstruction Project. And two appointments, uh, to the Animal Hearing Board, Brooke Smith, and the Zoning Board of Adjustments, Diane LaRue-Chau. Is there anybody online? No. Uh, council, does anything have, anybody want anything called? Nick?
Uh, the only thing I would mention is, is we have the consideration plans and specifications for the twenty-one Harrison Avenue Reconstruction Project. We won't get plans back from Stanley till the twentieth, so we're gonna have to move that back. So prior to making a motion on it and making it something a council action, I would like to just have that removed.
Have that removed.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds good. Council, anything else? All right, Robert, can you give me a motion removing that one?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under item one consent agenda with the exception of the public hearing number three, the consideration of plans and specifications for the 2021 Harrison Avenue Reconstruction Project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kathleen, when you're ready?
Moplin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay, first up tonight is a hearing, statement of consideration of an ordinance amending section one five five point oh three, sections amended of the chapter one fifty-five International Building Code of Burlington Municipal Code. Eric?
This is a change to our chapter one fifty-five of the city code, uh, which adopts the International Building Code. Um, there are some sections that are amended, and this is one we'd like to add to the code. Um, it primarily pertains to buildings downtown, uh, that don't have, uh, I guess enough space on the alley side or, uh, street side, uh, per the International Building Code to allow openings. Um, so we have a couple potential new buildings going in downtown and reviewing the code. Uh, they couldn't have windows on the street or alley side in some instances unless we make this change, um, just based on how the code reads. So, um, this will allow, uh, unprotected openings or windows on alley sides or street sides where the wall face is not unoccupied space of ten feet in width. Uh, most alleys are sixteen feet and, um, some of the, most of the streets are, are wider than that as well. So, uh, where that width is dedicated for public use. So this would allow windows on alley and street sides in all cases.
Okay. Council, any questions?
Was that done for a safety reason or fire code reason, or?
Uh, part of it is fire code where there's not access. Uh, we did review this with the fire marshal. Uh, this would, uh, give them proper access to buildings to fight fires through windows where there wasn't some before. Um, so they felt, uh, our code inspector and fire marshal felt this was appropriate.
Okay. So it sounds like it would be advantageous then?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jessica, there's no one online yet. Okay, council, any other questions? Can we get a motion?
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Moplin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye. Your Honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending section one five five dot oh three, sections amended of chapter one five five International Building Code of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second. When you're ready, Kathleen?
Moplin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay, they passed. Uh, next up was ordinances.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of the ordinance amending chapter eighty-one, all terrain vehicles and snowmobiles of the Burlington Municipal Code.
I need a second.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded, Chief Klein.
Evening, council. Uh, this will be in addition to the existing code, adding the acronym for UTV or Utility Terrain Vehicle. And then the adding definition for those vehicles. The only major change that you would notice would be the addition of, uh, either snowplows or snowplow blades for their use on city streets. Outside of that, there are no deletions or changes.
Okay. Uh, still no one online? Okay, council, any questions? Is this the second reading? Second. Bill's, yeah, Bill's got the, he won't waive it, so unless anybody has a question. Go ahead, Bill.
Your Honor, I have a motion to amend, to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of the ordinance amending chapter eighty-one, all terrain vehicles and snowmobiles of the Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading and for final adoption of the ordinance amending chapter eighty-one, all terrain vehicles and snowmobiles of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
So vote on the amendment first?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Moplin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
And now is amended.
Moplin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Okay, good job. Next up, resolutions.
Your Honor, I have a revol- revol- resolution approving the final part of Scooter's subdivision.
Second. That's Eric.
This is a one-lot subdivision at the corner of Angler and South Sixth Street. Uh, currently, there's two lots there. Um, the lot lines don't exactly match what's shown in red, but, uh, approximately that area in red, uh, they're desiring just to move that line. So each, uh, property has its own building and parking lot on its own lot. Uh, so it's just a simple one-lot subdivision.
Council, any questions for Eric? No, thank you, sir. Can we get a vote, please?
Moplin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay, next up, resolution number two.
Resolution, your honor, I have a resolution in support of targeted jobs, application for project Integra, expanding operations into the city of Burlington.
Need a second?
Mr. Hess, when you're ready, you've waited so long.
I know, thank you. Been here for a little while. Uh, good evening, council. Um, just pleased to, uh, have you consider, uh, approving this application for the targeted jobs withholding tax credit program for Integra pool covers. Um, in the, in the materials you have, we have Exhibit A that kind of talks a little bit about the proposed project. Uh, so this is a, um, a company that's, uh, looking to locate to the former Siemens Building, um, creating eighty jobs, um, within, uh, three years. Forty of those would be, uh, above the twenty-one dollar and sixty-one cent, uh, per hour, county wage, uh, threshold. Um, so a number of jobs range between fourteen dollars and thirty dollars per hour. Uh, so it's a great company. They, they, uh, are a leader in their industry, um, seeking to make, um, uh, motorized pool covers initially and then move into the vinyl pool liners. So, um, I have a development agreement there that's been, uh, worked up that, uh, kind of spells out exactly who's to do what and when and how and so forth. Uh, a, a, a no risk or low risk, um, um, proposal to the city as, uh, as these wages, wages, uh, the tax credits won't be, uh, issued until they create the jobs at the wages that they say and maintain those. So, um, there's an affidavit in, in the, um, um, packet as well from the, the owner of the company or the president of the company, as well as, uh, some information from the Des Moines County Assessor that, uh, in his opinion, based upon what we've supplied him to this point, that, um, the tax valuation of the building will not increase to the, to the level that the city would need to, uh, do a match to the project. So, uh, good news for our community, um, and, uh, we just appreciate the city's support in that. It will go to the IEDA from here, um, and they will make that final decision on the fourteenth of January.
Okay, council, you have any questions for Mr. Hess? Is there anybody on the phone? No, still? Go ahead.
So, I'm looking at, at the wages here. Is there a certain percentage of them that have to be higher end, Jeremy, or?
Yeah, um, well, so, so the, um, award is based upon the number of jobs that are above the county wage threshold. So they look at, uh, a certain percentage of those wages, um, that can be refunded to the company on a, on a quarterly basis, uh, but only those jobs that are above the twenty-one dollar and sixty-one cent per hour wage threshold. So the company is projecting a, a, at least forty of those eighty jobs to be above that twenty-one dollar and sixty-one cent, uh, wage threshold, and that's what drives the award. So there are, there, um, a- and again, those are, those are based on jobs, not on people. So a, a person could come into that job, work there for a certain amount of time, and not work out and leave, but a new person gets hired in, but they're always hired in above that twenty-one sixty-one per hour, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, council?
Jeremy, the other pilot cities they were considering are, they considering all of them? Or one for each, or just?
No, so this, this current, this company currently is, is looking at Burlington. But they're also looking at expanding in Knoxville, Tennessee, as well as, uh, I think it's, uh, Braunfield's, Texas. So they have multiple options to, to, to do this proposal. Us being a pilot city is just one of, you know, they're all border cities that are on, on the edges of the state. Um, and so I don't, I don't believe we're currently being, uh, the state of Iowa is only being targeted by looking at Burlington.
Okay.
But they do have options, uh, and probably competitive offers from, uh, the communities that they already exist in where they could expand, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Any, any more follow-up? Kathleen, can we get a vote? Mr. Hess, very nice work.
Thank you.
Moplin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes, please.
Okay, next up, number three.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2020 Harrison Avenue Storm Drainage over the bluff.
Need a second?
Sorry.
Need a second?
That's Robert did.
Okay.
Uh, good evening. Uh, the resolution in front of you would award contract to Brant Construction uh, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred dollars, uh, to perform the work at the end of Bluff Avenue. Um, I did send Eric a couple of images just to give you a perspective. We, last week at the work session, we talked kind of the reason why this project cost is so high. I am taking a picture at grade of the road, looking down at the, what would be kind of a midpoint of where the wall is. You can tell that that's a pretty good distance downward. So it ultimately, it's the difficulty of access for the work site is, is a lot of the reason why the dollar figure for this project is so high. Uh, we will pay for this project using, uh, the miscellaneous rehab project monies. We've used these monies for a lot of other projects already, uh, in the last year and a half. So, um, we have cash on hand, but we have, um, quite a few projects that are going out of that same line item. But here's another picture. I came down to kind of where Steve was standing before, and that shows you how much it starts to slough off even more. So that'll pro- that'll be about the beginning of where that wall, uh, starts. And so these blocks are, you know, these are one-ton blocks. These are two thousand pound blocks that they're dropping down in there. They'll pour a foundation wall with rebar and try and hold them in and secure them.
Just to clarify, it's at the end of Harrison Avenue, not Bluff Avenue, correct?
Did I say Bluff?
You did.
I'm sorry, Harrison Avenue.
For those listening at home, I know what you meant, but I want to make sure.
Yeah, it's Harrison Avenue. It's over the bluff at Harrison Avenue. I left a few of those key points out.
Okay, council, do you have any questions? Anybody online? All right, Kathleen, can we have a vote, please?
Moplin?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Okay, well, if we don't have anybody online, we'll take, oh, where we got?
We need to set, we need to introduce and then, I guess, vote down that resolution set date.
Oh, that's right, I forgot on, all right. So, consideration of plans and specifications for 2021 Harrison Avenue Reconstruction Project. Thank you, Kathleen.
I need a second.
Second. Wait, I think everybody seconded that one, we got it. Uh, do we have any, any more discussion about it? No, can we take a vote, please?
We just want to vote it down.
Vote it down, so we want to say no.
Ready?
Yep.
Moplin?
No.
Rinker?
No.
Phillips?
Nay.
Kreitzer? Graham Murray?
No.
Okay, next up, comments, I knew that'd get Robert. Next up, comments from, uh, city staff. Eric? Oh, what the, how the heck that get up there?
What is this? Looks like Buddy the Elf.
Why isn't that, isn't that Hop Along Bill Moplin the elf? It is.
I'd recognize those boots anywhere.
You're looking good, Bill, nice boots. Thank you, Eric, for that, that made my day.
I think he enjoys all four food groups. Candy Kings, candy corn.
That's a serious costume.
That is a serious costume. And the funniest thing was, he didn't know who Buddy the Elf was. Wouldn't he agree to do it? Sorry, shouldn't have let me next to you with a camera. Anyway, all right, Eric, do you have anything else? You can leave that up until we're done.
What were you dressed in?
I wasn't dressed up, I'm too crafty for that. Eric, did you have anything? Don, you have anything? Nick? Stephanie? Jess? Jeff? Matt?
Jim.
He's angry a little. He's angry. Sorry, I gotta get my.
I like syrup.
Yeah.
Um, I did send that email to y'all in regards to the sales tax. For, for our flood improvements, uh, just as a reminder, the state had awarded us twenty-six point two million dollars to do that work. Uh, out of, in, it was to be reimbursed to us over a period of years based off of the growth in sales tax, the state's portion of sales tax collections in Burlington. When that formula was originally done, that was done back in 2012. It didn't, uh, contemplate the idea of online sales tax being collected, nor online sales tax being such a predominant piece of what, uh, portion of what sales taxes are, uh, currently. Since COVID-19 hit, our, uh, local sales tax collections, I mean, the local retailers can attest to this, they have been down. We have, we saw a major change in the, the distribution between online sales and retail in-store sales. And that has meant the way that the rules are in place, we haven't had an increment since COVID-19 began. And there's a lot of dynamics with that that are likely to stay the way they are. Uh, there will be a, a change back as, as the shot rolls out, but it, it's been a change, a significant change in buying habits. So that has already impacted us to the extent, three hundred and fifty thousand that we lost last year, uh, we were supposed to get eight hundred thousand this year. Uh, we have nine hundred thousand in next year's budget to come out of that, uh, increment that is jeopardized unless there is a change in how the state, uh, considers the increment to include online sales purchases, what they collect through online sales. Um, we have, we had a cost overrun with our existing flood wall project, the second of them. Uh, we borrowed four point two million dollars for that project. The bids were four and a half million, four eight, um, plus engineering costs, plus any contingencies, we'll put that project at five point two, five point four million. We're having that budget shortfall on there. If we had the increment, we could cover it. Absent that, we're covering that out of our local option sales tax balance. Uh, we'll have a resolution be presented by Stephanie over the course of the next few weeks to authorize a transfer from local option sales tax to the flood account to cover that project. But this is not just that problem, it's an ongoing problem that we have with this, absent a change. I reached out to you just to encourage you to make sure that you contact our representatives, both locally and across the state, if you have contacts with, with any, uh, primarily Republican Party leadership members. Um, this is something that we need to fix on and is going to be difficult to get a fix on. Uh, as talking with the League of Cities, they, it's being perceived as if, to make a change as a tax increase. Uh, they're looking at it as tax increment financing. Um, but I get, I think what I would like to clarify is these were projects that the state looked at as needing to be done after this, the flooding that happened back in 2008, primarily what happened in Cedar Rapids. They made this funding stream available. They allocated funding from state, uh, revenues to make these projects be able to occur. We would not be doing these projects if they had not allocated those funds to it. I mean, it's a priority, but we didn't, it, there's such a dollar amount that we couldn't afford to do it. And now we're liable for projects we've undertaken already without a fix to this. It's, it'll be a significant issue as we move forward if we don't find it.
Is there a bill out there that you're working?
No.
I haven't seen anything in the League of Cities that says that there is.
No, there isn't. What they're looking at, this isn't, there's, and you got to think about this, there's only been a dozen communities that were, that took, that were eligible to take advantage of it and have taken advantage of it. Several of them, uh, had a funding stream that even though the, their increment went down, they still had enough increment to cover it. Des Moines is in a pinch on this, and I know there's a, I think Cedar Rapids, too, might be in a pinch on this, but not every city is. So there's only a few legislators, legislators across the state who are going to care. So that's going, that's where it's going to be a difficult fix.
Do you know what they've had planned for the money from the internet sales, the, the tax revenue from that? Do you know what their plans were? Because they.
Well, think back to 2012, they didn't collect it.
Right, when it was calculated, it was not collected, which is why it wasn't.
So they're collecting.
They are col- they are collecting. Uh, it's general funded, it covers their general fund operations. But what they had done is they had said, "We look at this as a recognized issue across the state, and we're going to allocate the growth in sales tax collections in these areas to cover this." Granted, they didn't mention online sales, but it wasn't even contemplated at the time. And now you're asking legislators who are in existence, uh, that are sitting up at the Capitol now to go back and, and look at an issue from eight years ago. And their, their dynamic of looking at it is to say, "If we make this change, it's a tax increase." It's, it's not. They made a promise, the, they, and we, but we need a rule change in order to get things done. And it, the only way it's going to happen is through the legislature.
So with that, um, we all, we as a council need to write our House and Senate leaders and also our local House and Senate reps. That's what they're there for, so let's write to them.
Yeah.
Get it done right away, don't delay it.
Yeah, and I don't know if we can get a solution to it. The league doesn't feel very confident on it, so.
Is there strength in numbers of constituents also would write?
The more people that make their voice heard, yes, that is the, that's what people listen to.
Squeaky wheel gets the grease, right?
Yeah.
So.
But I thought, so if you're listening to us out there, we need your help.
Yeah, good point.
Burlington needs your help.
Yep. And really, that is the biggest thing that I wanted to make sure to prioritize. Had a couple other things, but this is it.
Go ahead.
Um, budget, we'll be beginning that, this next work session. It's just, uh, the beginning budget overview, covering the general fund and some, some of the major things that are factors that, that played into that, and if we have time to get into the CIP.
Okay. Sounds good.
So, um, and I don't know what these other things I have written down, so I'm not going to worry. Oh, we would mention for my position, we've got a dozen or so people who have applied as of last week. Uh, they're expecting, the closure on taking applications is this Saturday, I think. That, uh, the search consultants think that we'll have about twenty, that they'll ultimately end up on with, based off of where they're at now for, I mean, that's still a guess, but they're, they look at it, they're looking at what they consider a decent candidate pool. It's not, it's not a shallow one, it's not as deep as what I've seen of some other cities end up with, but it's a decent candidate pool. And again, that interview process, uh, we'll be doing, uh, some online interviews mid-month and then the weed down in, on the fourteenth. And then, uh, final interviews will be the last, uh, Friday, Saturday of the, of the month, so.
Sweet.
That is what I had.
Who wouldn't want to move here, right?
Okay. And Jessica, there is somebody online, if you would open it up. Hi, welcome, this is, uh, the city council. Uh, you are in the, uh, comments from the citizens section. Please know that we want to hear your thoughts and concerns, but if it's not on the agenda, we may not be able to address your questions tonight. Uh, please feel free to go ahead.
Hello?
Hello? You're on.
Hi, this is Pastor Boyer.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I was calling because I was kind of hoping that, uh, the city council would make a comment pertaining to the situation with effort and benefit. I do understand that there are other pressing things that need to be taken care of, but a- as of, as of now, uh, it, it's been maybe nine weeks and we still haven't heard from you all. So, uh, if it's not on the agenda, we're asking that it be put on the agenda
Well, Pastor, I thought we had discussed this previously. I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for. You've gotten a letter of, for me personally and as of the mayor, and we've had some discussions on that, but I'm not sure what you're looking for here, to be honest with you, that we can do. And again, it's not on the agenda, so I'll be happy to get with you afterwards and talk to you about what exactly steps you want us to do from that, but I'm not sure where we're at right now.
Well, Mr. Mayor, and please understand, it's not, it's not anything that I'm expecting you all to do. It's what the community is expecting you all to do. I do believe, we have had conversations about this issue, and you have told me some things, but yet again, it's not about telling me, it's about informing the community, because they are the ones that's in the blind on this.
Well, I'm not, shouldn't be discussing it, but I will say that, you know, I did send that letter, and I was disappointed to hear that you didn't read it. The reason I sent it to the congregation is, it was proven when I read the letter at the work session, that not many people watch council meetings, and that's why I reached out to the churches directly. But then to find out it wasn't read, I was disappointed, I'm not going to lie, because I sought out some guidance from some of the church leaders about how I should approach that, and that's what I did. So I can get with you, and we'll figure out exactly what you want, or we can do that at a work session, but we really can't address it here because it's not on the agenda.
Well, and we brought the letter up in opening, and I will definitely give you a call later, and if not tonight, tomorrow, and we can discuss some things. But the reason why I didn't read it to my congregation, I don't know what the pastor did, but the reason why I didn't read it to my congregation was simply because a situation like that, it doesn't cause for a letter. People need to see their leaders stand for them. People need to hear their leaders stand up for them. And for me to read what you wrote, that's me telling them what you said. They want to hear what you said themselves.
Which is, which is why I wrote the letter, short of coming to, coming to each church, which I'm willing to do, that's, you know, and again, that was my personal opinion and my opinion as mayor, and I tried to step up and do what you asked. So, well, I'll be happy to talk to you about it tomorrow or the next day.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, again, I truly appreciate you all's time, and I'll speak with you later.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, Bill, you got anything?
No.